What do you want to tell me?
Yeah, three column in the paper. But everybody has to get it there.
Yeah. Did that one been your twin? Hey, listen, that one, that one your sister, your little sister wasn't.
You need to put your name on it.
You're only not right, you know that? We love you. Where's that little thing? I just stay home. You know, I sit over here so I'm not bothered by you two, but we're gonna get your name plate put on that table. I don't have to worry about it now. I break my own plate.
Good evening, everyone, council, staff, and residents. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Let the record show that all council members are present. Councilmember Solomon, you will be doing the pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Edmund Jones, would you please lead us in invocation? Please rise.
As we bring in all one in minds and thoughts and meditate on what life and how good life has been to us with love, peace, and joy. Most gracious, eternal, and heavenly Father, we pause first to say thank you that you watched over us last night. And then, God, early this morning as you peeped over back in the heaven, you smiled on us, made us arise to a brand-new day that wasn't promised to us, and we thank you, God. Now, Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless this council. Bless them right now with peace, love, and unity and joy, that the things they do will be pleasing to this city and to themselves and to the world. Then allow the people sitting here, God, to be obedient, respectful, and honored to you, God. God, let not personality and conflicts enter this meeting. We're gonna claim it, and it will not in any, God. God, because you told us anything, we ask in your name, you were granted. And we ask you right now to grant peace, love, and joy and happiness right now. Then, God, as we stand, we realize around the world so many people standing in danger, so many people have lost their homes through fire and earthquakes. Be with them, Father. Then, God, Father, service men and women, men and women standing in arms' way as we stand here enjoying all the fruits of life. Be with them, God, keep them, God. Bless their families. And we pray, God, they return safely to us, Father. Then, when we have done all that we've signed these own hands to do, we ask you to give us a home somewhere in your kingdom where we may praise your name forevermore. These are all blessings, and we ask your holy and righteous name. Amen, amen, amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Jones and Councilmember Solomon. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Could you raise your hand, 'cause mine's not working? Councilmember Board?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Mayor Porteau?
I second that motion.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Thank you. We will now have, oh, is that mine? Okay, thank you. We'll now have citizen comments, Ms. Anka.
Good afternoon. You have four minutes, council. If you would like to say anything, your choice, a comment, a dialogue, it's not, it's forbidden, but you do have one minute.
Councilmembers, Madam Mayor, the first topic I'm going to speak on is the Chaparral Pump Station. I just have a few questions about it. So, obviously, there's a need for a pump station, and the staff recommends rejecting this bid. And my first question is, okay, if we reject this, what are we gonna do instead? If there's a need for it and we're gonna reject it, are we not gonna meet that need? What's the alternative? Obviously, if there's a bid, there's a need for it. And also, I'm just curious how these numbers are so different and why, and which one is correct? So, Freezer Nichols said that it's $4 million and over $4 million, and SSP Industries LP said over $8 million. So, it's like twice as much. Obviously, there's a big difference. Which one is correct? And if there is a discrepancy, is there a way to adjust it to the correct number? But the main question is, if we're gonna reject this and there is a need for it, what's gonna be done instead? And then, another topic is regarding engineering design standards update. It's part of the CIP plan. I think it's item 17, yes. And I noticed it says that the current city engineering standards are outdated and do not meet current state and federal requirements. I would like to know from the city engineer if he could give us some examples of what current standards don't meet state and federal requirements? If we're talking about ADA standards, I know that when I, I work on site plans, I look online what the federal guidelines are, what the ADA requirements are. For example, today, I had to decide to calculate how many ADA parking spaces are required on a site. I didn't look at the Colleen standards. I looked online on the, for the federal standards. So, I'm just curious what, if he can give us a couple of examples of which of the City of Colleen's engineering standards do not meet the current state and federal requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Brown, good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to start off by saying, and I mentioned this last week, we need to do better with our contracts. We should never have a contract for one firm that is dependent on the cost of construction. What this ends up happening and leading to is we have unexpected expenses that could, if an audit were to happen, comes to the conclusion and leads to that it is a mismanagement of funds when we can't figure out where the money went. As far as route where this is a need, I've always talked about approving needs over once. That is a need, and I have been able to personally witness what, how much good that system already does. So, the upgrades, I think, will do even better for the city, for the citizens, and for the staff. I have a question, and number, item number seven. If it's not answered, then later on, I'll just have to go based on educated guesses and presumptions. But the money that we get from Harker Heights for that, will that go into the water and sewer fund, or will that go into the general fund? As far as the Chaparral Pump Station, Cedar Ridge, which is out in that area, already has flooding issues due to the Chaparral Sump Pump. I believe, and I have not had a chance to verify, but I do believe that the pump station project being completed and getting that up and running and fixed would make sure that it protects those residents from having their yards being flooded on a regular basis. I've always been a big supporter of grants because it doesn't take money out of taxes or fees. So, I think that we, we really need to go ahead and go along with the grant for the airports. And also, $75,000 increase for a change order for refuse trucks is actually a relatively small amount, if you look at the market right now. And again, refuse trucks are a need. Since it's not part of the public hearing, part of the public hearing, whatever, I'm just gonna talk about a couple of things on the budget real quick. I'm gonna go back to and ask the question, when is the notice going out that disabled veterans will no longer park for free at our airports? Because that is part of the budget right now. What about notices that all the fees for all of our community center parks and rec, everything associated with KCCC, all of those fees are going to increase, as well as taking a percentage of sales tickets sold and additional fees for vendors? And then, as far as the development fees go, if you look at it and take it down, a 10-acre review would average $38.82 per hour. Is that what we're paying the staff members on average who are doing those reviews? Also, if you look at it, if I have a smaller development, I'm paying more per acre than someone who has a larger development because we're saying, we're paying the same price. If this is really intended to have the developers cover the cost of, of our staff time and what is happening, then we should really think about going to a billable hour process instead of having one standard set fee. That makes it fair for everyone, and we can verify that costs are being covered, especially with the new law saying that we can't profit from them. That would be one way to make sure that we're invoicing all of the builders and developers, making sure we're not profiting from them, but also that we're not undercharging if that's the concern. I would be interested to see an analysis of what the billable hours would come out for, for any of these projects. I know that's my time, so I'll be back later, but I would appreciate an answer, at least to the question on the Chaparral Sump Pump or the Chaparral Pump Station.
Your time is up.
And the WCID money, where that will go to.
Mr. Forino, sir, you have four minutes.
Mayor.
Your time is up now.
Are you going to offer the city manager an opportunity to answer, because it looks like he's prepared to talk?
I'm gonna repeat myself one more time. Your time is up. Please remove yourself.
Just as a reminder, you did tell them they have the right to answer.
Mr. Forino, you have four minutes, sir. Good evening.
On the topic of salaries, we pay a quarter million dollars to the city manager. And I question the validity of that salary. Just today, after going over some things, we pay a quarter million dollars to a man that can't get a firm handle on city fees, and yet he wants to implement a magic system. We pay you a quarter million dollars for that. For all we know, a lot of these developers and builders in this room tonight, how do we know we don't owe them a rebate? You've continually mismanaged. You tried to gaslight me with questioning previous budgets and an audit in the past, saying that it was a forensic audit when it was a management audit. Is it worth a quarter million dollars for someone that has a pattern?
Mr. Forino, are we on the budget?
Yeah, this is the budget, Madam Mayor. We're paying this man a quarter million dollars, and we're not getting our money's worth.
Okay.
One quarter million dollars, where you have a pattern, sir, of having rogue, out-of-control employees under your direct charge.
So, Mr. Forino, can we get back to the budget and not attack the city manager? If you got something to say toward him personally?
We're paying a quarter million dollars.
You can do a citizen petition on it, but right now, we on the general items.
Oh, a citizen petition, I did that, and I didn't get any answers for what I'm paying for to begin with.
Do you want to discuss about the budget? You know the routine.
Is it worth a quarter million dollars to pay a man who makes an accusation to be an official email? And I threaten his family?
Mr. Forino, Mr. Forino, this is my last one. Can we stay focused on the budget?
Puesi un grosso, un proprio.
Well, thank you. Next, Mr. Gary Purser. Sir, good evening. You have four minutes. Please stick to the items on the agenda.
I hadn't even looked at the agenda. The budget is on there, I guess, and that's what I was here to talk about. I want to talk about the fees, and I'm assuming I can. What I'd like for the city council to do, or to understand, is that the fees y'all are trying to implement is putting your community at a disadvantage. When I have to pay eight, not I, but developers pay eight times the fees of your sister cities, that's out of line. They should be in line with your competition, which is Copper's Cove, Belton, and Temple. So, I would appreciate if y'all would look at the structure of their fees and try to mimic somewhere in that neighborhood. It doesn't, it doesn't, it's not right to charge us eight times as much. And I would like to say that as far as developers that build your cities, you know, we're looking tonight at a $282 million budget. That's close to a third of a billion dollars. Where does that money come from? That money has to come from fee-oriented services, and that's water, sewer, solid waste. It has to come from abhorrent taxes on their houses, their property taxes, and it has to come from sales taxes. So, that money is derived from development, from growth. And it's, development's not a good word, but it's from growth. And if you go to different cities, whether it be Florence, Copper's Cove, Gatesville, Lampasses, they don't have that. Nolanville, they don't have $282 million because they have no growth. They don't have the extent of growth that we have. And growth comes with revenue. And when we, when we get out here and develop the community, then that is perpetual income. That income is coming to the city in perpetuity. And we carry our weight. We make y'all money. That's just the nature of the beast. And y'all need to recognize that growth is good for all of us. We all get a domino effect. I can tell y'all that there's some up here that they're in business, and you couldn't have that business over in Gatesville or Lampasses, 'cause the market will not sustain it. Our market will sustain it because of growth. So, growth is not a bad thing. And I want to mention that, you know, I don't like the fact that there's a narrative that the city council is in cahoots with the developers or in their pocket. I have not given any one of y'all up there any money. I have very little relationship with any of y'all, and I want that to go on record, that I haven't given anybody up there money. And I have no relationship with any of y'all. Y'all are trying to make a living. Y'all have chose your industries you're gonna make a living in, and it is wrong to be attacked when all you're doing is trying to better your families. That's wrong, and I'll stand here, whether I like you or not, and I'll defend that. That is wrong. And so, I would like for y'all to just consider where your $282 million come from, and is a cumulative number from many different areas, and y'all do not lose money on us. It's just the way things are. And I'd open for any questions that y'all might have.
Thank you. There are no questions. Mr. Josh Welch, good evening. You have four minutes, sir.
Council, good evening. Mayor, thanks for having me. Staff, I will just back up a little bit of what Mr. Purser just said. If, some of those numbers as far as the development, and there's lots of data and figures out there to support that how growth and how development supports municipality, how it supports the city, how it supports local government and local areas, through different associations I'm involved with, if any of y'all would ever like that, be happy to share that with you. I'm here also to talk about the fees as well and representing kind of the builder, home building community here for that. We can't always show up with 30 people, 40, 50 people down here, so I'm here kind of representing their behalf on it. And we do have a lot of questions and different issues with some of the fee structures that have been proposed here in the city. We've been down here previously talking about, asking questions about the, what, is it per occurrence, or is it per acre, or is it a one-flat fee? And there's still confusion about that, I think, and I'm not for sure if we've, I haven't seen the fee schedule that's been updated that's supposed as a part of the budget tonight. I looked for it, couldn't find it. Hope maybe y'all have it. But I don't know if some of that even is the right direction, way to go about it. One example I'd just like to bring up, it's like, if you're basing things on like, I know like the past fee schedule, a per-acre instance, like you've got a fee for something that's zero to 10 acres, or one that's 10 to 50 acres, and another fee for a piece of a project that's 50-plus, well, of being involved in different, many types of different development projects, I can tell you that the cost of doing inspections and reviewing plans on, say, a 50-acre residential subdivision site that may have large lots and may have 51-acre lots, is going to be very, very different than a 50-acre site that's gonna have higher-density single-family garden homes, multifamily apartments. And then, when you add in, okay, well, it's 50 acres, we also have commercial involved with it, we also have other uses involved, well, that's totally different than where we even started at with that first 50-acre example. So, is it fair to charge all those things the same? And I would try, I would, I would like to say, yeah, probably not. And so, I would follow in what Mr. Purser suggested in looking at some of the other cities and what they charge here locally with some of these fees, and to keep them simple, keep them clear to where everybody understands what the fees are, what's going to be charged, what they're gonna be charged for. I think, when I went through Temple's fee list, I think Temple has a total of three versus a long laundry list that we have here in Colleen. Waco is another city I would, I would highly recommend y'all look at, which is similar size, close proximity to us here in Colleen. Their fee structure's very simple as well. So, regardless of what y'all decide to charge, I would highly, I would very like, much like to see a very much more simplified fee schedule to where we don't have to have a list of a dozen or 15 or 20 different fees and a long, lengthy process for each individual thing, but let's pick a few items you wanna charge fees for, come up with one to charge them, and to keep it simple to where it's clear, it's easy for the city to organize, and it's easy to charge them. The last subdivision inspection fee I went to go pay, I was told to go to the permit office to pay it. The permit office didn't know what I was talking about. They had no, I think I must have been the first one to go down and pay it, 'cause we didn't know about them until June. So, went down to go pay it, the permit office didn't know about it, and we ended up getting that fixed, I think, since then, and me and Mr. Cagle have communicated, and I think that's probably got fixed. But if we have clear, concise fee structures, I think that would be very beneficial for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Segar.
Yes, I had a question. All right.
Yes, sir.
First, I just want to start off, 'cause you identified yourself as the home builders, and I just want to make sure, you're a member of the Home Builders Association, which is an organization that a lot of home builders are part of. Is that correct?
That's correct. The Central Texas Home Builder Association that I'm on the board of and been kind of representing them through some of this, we cover, that association covers local, the local cities of, and builders and developers from, through Harker Heights, Copper's Cove, Kentner, Gatesville, Lampasses.
Okay, yeah, and that's, and the other thing, 'cause you're representing them, so I'm gonna assume that, but what I need clarification, 'cause I look at all these different numbers, and I think there's really two issues that me, as a council member, would like clarification, and maybe this is where we can come into some kind of agreement here. But as I look at all these different fees, I think the biggest thing is, we just need to clarify, is it per acre or per occurrence? And I think if we can clarify that, would you consider that maybe some progress here?
Well, and there's multiple, and there's multiple different instances of the fees that are per acre or per occurrence. It's all the way, it's, it's the inspection fees, review fees, plating fees, so which one's per acre, which one's per occurrence, which one's a flat fee? Because I had a local builder here in Colleen that shared here with me recently that they, because I thought these fees were, we were told they were gonna be flat fees, well, they paid a $25,000 preliminary plat fee, had to shift, they shifted what they were gonna do in phase one of their project, so they changed their, their phasing lines, but by doing that, they had to resubmit and pay another $25,000 fee just to change their phasing line. So, that was been charged per occurrence. So, which is per occurrence and which is a flat fee?
So, we just need clarification on that. I think that's one thing.
And clarification on that, and then also looking at the fees, and are they, you know, is that actually the cost of what it's costing to do that service?
Well, and that was, that was the second part of my question, 'cause I look, as I look down on all these fees, I see that one of the biggest thing, it's, it's 25, I see a lot of $25 per lot, and I think that in hearing some of the developers, I think that's the biggest thing right there.
And, and just for comparison purposes, so y'all know, like, that $25 per lot, I think Temple was three and Waco was five.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to briefly touch on what Councilmember Segar just mentioned, and for the record, we spoke briefly about this last week at our meeting, and I believe on the record, it was clarified that there, there is no per occurrence. A per occurrence is per your project. So, the inspection fees are per the development. So, you get a package of inspections for that price. There is no per occurrence. And I believe on the per acre, we clarified that prior, back when we voted on the fees and approved them. If I'm mistaken, please let me know, Mr. Cagle.
Thank you. Mr. Cagle, is you gonna clarify that? You're not? Okay. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
So, that did bring me to that question, but my understanding is that there was someone that had a situation, is it per occurrence, and they were charged that? Is that what you were saying, or can you explain that to me again?
Yes, and so, that was for a preliminary plat fee. And so, the preliminary plat, they were charged per occurrence. And so, that was, that's part of the question is, well, that one says per occurrence, the same as the inspection fee says per occurrence, but yet one's supposed to be a flat fee and one is not? How are we supposed to know the difference?
Mr. Cagle, did that fall under the old system versus the new, that has not gone into effect yet until October, or do we know what happened there?
Well, there's not an old and new system. It's been, it's been the same. So, the only thing that occurred was on one slide that we had during the presentation, it said per acre, when it should not have said per acre.
I think the question is the occurrence, the word occurrence, that was what the question was, Mr. Zager's.
Right, if we could get Mr. Zager's come up here.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. Thank you, sir.
Sure, I mean, the discussion was, this per acre puts it in the category, and per occurrence is this the one time?
That was, that was correct. So, the, the unit was acre, so you look at the subdivision, how big is it? 10 acres, 12 acres, 15 acres? Where does it fit in that category? So, the application is the occurrence. So, you have one application, that's one occurrence, but the unit per acre clarifies what category that, where it goes into. And that's for the, that was for the engineering portion of the review. In regard to the question, if you have a question in regard to the plating, preliminary plat, we also have Wallace here can clarify any questions on that.
Thank you, sir. That's all. Thank you both. And just for the record, 'cause you get one minute to speak per council member. Councilwoman Gonzalez, did you finish up before I go to Councilmember Board? Oh, Ms. Messchner.
Counsel, I was just gonna add for clarification that I think there are two different things that are being conflated here. One is the subdivision inspection fees, and the other is the preliminary plat application. And so, the, the mention of a preliminary plat fee that is per lot, that is the, again, the preliminary plat application fee has a $25 per lot fee that has, that's separate, it's a separate application process from the subdivision inspection fee. So, hopefully, that clarifies things a little bit.
And also, Councilwoman Gonzalez, the Audit Committee met, and Councilmember Alvarez and Councilmember Board, along with myself, are on that committee, and we will be doing an internal inspection and investigate, audit, and development service, and maybe this can clear up some of those misunderstandings. So, I think basically about the fees, that's one of your biggest concerns, part of the budget, am I correct?
The fees, and then also the process, right? I just wanted, I've said that from the beginning, and I think that we all, we've kind of belabored that point, but I just want to make sure that we have a process in place so that we know exactly, to their point, what they're being charged for, that we understand exactly how we're paying, who's paying, and what we're collecting for, and that it makes sense for both the development community and the city ultimately.
Correct. And your same concerns, the Audit Committee has those concerns and some more, and that will be a part of the internal audit and development service. Yes, ma'am. Anyone else? Councilmember Board?
Thank you, Madam.
And we, each council member only get one minute according to the governor's standards and expectations. Councilmember Board?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I was considering whether or not I was gonna say something.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I was considering whether I was going to say something. Consider what's been in the press about those in real estate, but I do need to ask this particular question, just for clarity. In relation to the fees, I was mentioning that we're proposing eight times some of the sister cities, Mr. Cagle, and so I'd like to get some type of clarity on how we establish where we are now.
Sure. Yes, sir, we have a larger list that we
Do an average, and we're not supposed, excuse me, we're not supposed to go over the average, and that's what we've done. Every year, we update those. And so, yes, the smaller cities that were discussed are lower than us, and many of the larger cities are far higher than us, some exponentially so. I think, I think you really need to look at the city of Waco, because there are many, many factors higher than we are for the same subdivision. We've been doing the analysis, I hate to even throw out the number, it sounds so large, greater than ours, but we have called them and verified it. And no, we do not come close to recovering our cost. That was, part of the discussion was to just at least start getting a little closer to recovering our costs.
Mr. Zegars, would you like to?
Yeah, so, when we did, when we did call the city of Waco, their, their methodology is to recover 100% of their costs. So, that goes towards plan review and inspection. So, they have developed a system that's based on the contractor or developer is supposed to fill out a sheet that spells out how many linear feet of pipe, how many manholes, everything, and find out what the total construction cost of the project is. And then they take a percentage of that for, for their fees. When we looked at it, and they seemed a little high. So, when we looked at Mitchell Farms, the actual inspection costs for that one was going to be roughly $309,000. That's for the inspections and the reviews, or that's the local one here that we've been hearing about, that we charged the $5,000. So, when we looked at Waco, they are the most expensive. They're the largest, probably Austin would be the only one to be comparable to what they have. But we also looked at Belton, we looked at Copper's Cove, yes, they are lower than us, but they also do have additional fees compared to what was presented earlier. They have, you know, for, for example, if I were to look at Mitchell Farms again, you know, where we were saying was, with our costs, we would have had $17,350 for our reviews, our planning, TIA worksheet, PUD, all that together is what that cost. If we looked at Waco, they're $309,000. If we looked at Belton, they were total, was going to be $13,760. Copper's Cove was roughly $5,550, but then we looked at Round Rock, that was $41,000. Flugerville was $92,000. So...
You did not include Temple. Were we the Temple?
So, Temple doesn't do fees. We've asked them, they have an option where they feel they have so much development that their council do not want to charge fees, they're just going to have the taxpayers, the taxpayers pay for everything. So, that's their, that is their adage, and that was kind of their methodology, is that they just put the bear on the taxpayers.
Okay. I guess the only concern I might have is, it was mentioned prior, in the prior meeting, that staying competitive, you know, between the city of Colleen, Copper's Cove, Harker Heights, and potentially not charging, it's so high. I'm curious if we are really setting ourselves in a good position to allow for that competitive nature to take place, where it's not in a position where folks don't want to consider doing business here.
Mr. Cagle?
Yep. I, I don't believe these fees are enough to discourage a developer. I mean, P&amp;Z is still busy, and I expect they still will be. I think the bigger impact on anything going on right now is mortgage rates. But we're in Central Texas, and it's a high-growth area. And if you look at, at some of these other cities that have a little more staff or a little more sophisticated, they work very hard on trying to make sure that development pays for itself. And that's sort of one of the backbones of our comprehensive plan, is fiscally responsible growth, because there's a cost there. And so then the question becomes, who pays it? Do the people moving in causing the growth pay it, or do our existing taxpayers pay it? Another way you could pay it is just don't do any inspections, and, and we've seen what happens when we get poor infrastructure. That's incredibly costly. So, I guess the real question comes down is, is who do you want to pay?
Thank you for that information. That's all I got, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams, Mayor Protem, and Councilmember Solomon, you, all three, you have the opportunity to speak, but if you do not want to use your minutes, Councilmember Alvarez and Councilmember Segura has requested through just clicking on to use another minute, but they only have one. So, are you going to use your minute? Do y'all want to ask questions or anything? Could you yield it to them if you're not?
Yes, I have.
You have something to say?
Just one question.
You own, sir.
Along with these, comparing these cities, not only Temple, Belton, Copper's Cove, but did not y'all go further out, like Round Rock and Odessa, cities that are our size in population?
So, we do that every year. Every year, we set the fee schedule, the beginning, roughly about January, we do an exercise where we look at the, the average of cities that are our size, and the local city, you know, the local ones around here, Harker Heights, Copper's Cove, Temple, and we look at those averages. And then once the overall averages of the local and the ones that are our size together, that establishes that percentage of range of where we could, we want to put our, you know, we put our fees. This, this exercise, we just looked at Round Rock and Flugerville and Waco, and then the local, you know, the local cities here. But every year, we do our fee schedule, we do get a list of sister cities that are our size, and also the local ones that we use to find that average of where we can kind of meet our, adjust our fee schedule to, to kind of meet those averages.
So, the city of us would be like, well, Waco is, we are larger than Waco, but I'm talking about like Odessa and Round Rock?
I believe those, I, I can't remember the exact cities that we use, but we do find ones that are comparable to our size.
And Abilene?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
It is always the right thing to do the right thing. And we hear that constantly when we look at our fees, when we look at our cities, when we look at the surrounding areas. We want to compare ourselves to others. But what we have to always understand is that we are the city of Colleen, and we have to work within our boundaries and of the means that we have and what we need for our city. It's good to compare, but sometimes the comparison doesn't work. We have to look at each city uniquely. We need to, if we need to go back and look at those fees, let us go back and look at the surrounding fees. But let's just ensure it's the right time to do the right thing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Adams.
I was, actually was going to initially do a point of order, because we, we're starting to make it a habit of doing, discussing agenda items during citizen comments, and I would ask for a call for the orders of the day and proceed to the next agenda item or the next citizen comment, and we're finished with our one-minute questions.
And thank you for bringing it up, but also, if a resident has a comment and they would like for us to answer it, we have always done it. That's why that one minute is allotted for them to answer it. Anything else? Thank you, sir. And to answer every one question that may not heard me, as all the individuals that had citizen comments that spoke in reference to the fees, the audit committee have met and determined that there will be an internal audit in development service. Madam Secretary, consent agenda. Counsel, you have three times to speak each for three minutes.
Madam Mayor, just a moment, please. Consent agenda. MN 23021, consider minutes of regular city council meeting on August 8th, 2023. MN 23022, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of August 22nd, 2023. RS 23133, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the execution of amendment number one to the professional services agreement agreement with Randall Scott Architects Incorporated for the Community and Senior Center Expansion and Renovation Project in the amount of $390,631. RS 23134, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the RouteWare Incorporated hardware upgrade for solid waste collection vehicles in amount not to exceed $180,384. RS 23135, consider a memorandum resolution approving a negotiated settlement between the Atmos City Steering Committee and Atmos Energy regarding the 2023 Atmos Rate Review Mechanism filing. RS 23136, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the restated and amended water disposal contract with WCID number one to include the city of Harker Heights as a customer. RS 23137, consider a memorandum resolution rejecting bid received for bid number 2339 Chaparral Pump Station Project. RS 23138, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a Federal Aviation Administration Airport Infrastructure Grant offer for the design of the Passenger Terminal Mechanical Improvements Project at Colleen-Fort Hood Regional Airport in the amount of $267,322. RS 23139, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a change order with Chastain Enterprises Incorporated for solid waste refused trucks in the amount of $75,453. RS 23140, consider a memorandum resolution awarding RFP 2336 to United Healthcare for an excess risk policy, stop-loss insurance for medical and pharmacy claims under the city health insurance plan effective October 1, 2023, in the amount of $739,718. RS 23141, consider a memorandum resolution rescheduling the city council meetings for November and December 2023 and January 2024.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mayor Protem?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Segura.
I second that.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no.
Mayor, to pull...
The items that the resident, what did you say?
Are to pull the item on the pump station and the item on the water and sewer fund. So, RS 23136 and RS 23134.
It's 137 or 134?
Uh, 130, thank you. 137 and...
136.
136, yes, thank you.
You're welcome. All in favor of approving the consent agenda items except RS-23-136 and RS-23-137. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Mr. Reynolds? The motion carries five to two with Mayor Protem Cobb in opposition and Councilmember Solomon in opposition of moving RS-23-136 and RS-23-137. Mr. Reynolds? Mr., hold on, Mr. Reynolds. Do you have any items, questions for him on these items?
They were doing the
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Segura.
I just, I just wanted clarification on that last motion, because I think the motion was to approve the agenda, and then we voted on something, and I don't know
Except, I put the word except.
Yeah, but that wasn't the motion, because he said it, but then he didn't, the motion was to approve the agenda, right?
Pull it.
He can pull it. When it comes to the consent agenda, he can.
So, the last one, I just want clarification. We voted on the consent agenda or to pull the motion, those two items. I don't know, I just need that clarification.
So, you, you approved everything except for 136 and 137?
And I'm sorry for the misunderstanding, because we have always did it that way. So, next time, I'll make it more clear. Mr. Adams, what questions you have for Mr. Reynolds on RS-23-136?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's actually both of them. There were a couple of questions from citizen comments. One was about the pump station. I know you brought up, you guys briefed the plan for if we don't approve the contract. And I don't, that may not have been heard, if you can repeat that for record. And I guess for the water and sewer fund, it was asked whether there's the funds that's paying back on the bond. I don't know, Mr. Cagle, could I answer that?
Sure, I can. I can answer that. The revenue that the city of Harker Heights will send us will go to the water and sewer fund. And we even talked about setting that aside for future expansion of the plant.
Thank you.
I think that was stated at our workshop.
It was.
Did you say that was? Everybody agreed? Okay. And the next item is RS-23-137?
Yeah, they were both tied. I just, I asked both questions. And, and again, I will restate that, I know all this was said at the workshop, but it was brought up again on citizen comments, so I'm just given a chance for it to be actually answered, since we did it for the other items.
So, can we, and there's some questions we didn't answer, and council had the opportunity, but they focused on what they wanted to discuss. If there are any more questions for Mr. Reynolds before we vote on these two items?
No, I, I, could you explain about the pumps?
It came in at 8.4 million. The original estimate, in the 2019 master plan, which is what this project is, was derived from, was 4.5 million. The adjusted estimate, as we got ready to go out to bid, because we are post-COVID, as we went out to bid for this, was about 6.2. So, this, the bid came in at about 2.2 million more than what we had, what the recent estimate was. So, yes, we do feel, as the staff and as the freezing nickels, that we should go out, rebid this project, which we planned to do before the end of the calendar year, and then move forward at that point. So, we only have one bid for this project, and we think we'll get a better, better price than if we got a more competitive bid by going back out there.
Thanks. Madam Mayor, would it be in order to move to approve both items?
I would love if you would do that. I was going to ask for that motion.
I move that we approve 136 and 137.
Councilmember Solomon.
I'm second.
So, the motion is to approve RS-23-136 and RS-23-137. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. The motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready. Budget, council members, you have three times each to speak for three minutes.
PH 23051, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the FY 2023 annual budget of the city of Colleen to increase revenue and expense accounts in multiple funds. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance of the city council of the city of Colleen, Texas, amending the FY 2023 annual budget of the city of Colleen to increase revenue and expense accounts in multiple funds, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, providing a savings clause, and establishing an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, Mrs. Drake went through the slides last week. Would you like for her to go back through the slides? Yes, you say yes or no? Because we have to have a public hearing on this. Yes, you say yes or no? Because we have to have a public hearing on this. The public hearing has to be, she gives her comments, but we have to open up the public hearing. And then if you have anything to say after that, you can, or if you want her to go in details more about the slides, you can do it now.
I'll wait till after.
Okay, sir. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, ma'am. Public hearing is open. Melissa Brown, you have four minutes.
Coming up to be cheerful and supportive for once, the council just approved an amendment or an ordinance allowing for an increase in expenditures for the firmware and for the refuse trucks. I think this goes hand in hand with that in order to make sure that our solid waste department can run as efficiently as possible for the citizens, for the business owners, and for everyone involved. It has been said multiple times that citizens only come up when they oppose something. They never come up to the podium to speak when they support something. I want to start changing that pattern, come up and say that I 100% support this, and I know the council's going to do the right thing on this. So thank you.
Public hearing is closed. Is there any discussions before I ask for a motion? And that's Councilmember Segaro. I know you want to speak. You have three minutes, sir.
I just want to make sure I'm in the right part because I know that we've been discussing these fees here, and I don't know if they fall under this part here or another part. Can you clarify the fees that we've been discussing?
The budget amendment item only, and the fees are not a part of the budget amendment for this fiscal year.
Yeah, I just want to clarify because I know, I'll speak to that when it comes here.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Alvarez, do you make an emotion?
I move to approve PH 23-051 as presented.
Thank you. Councilmember Segaro, you back up for some reason.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion on the amendment? All in favor, yes. All opposed, Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 23050, hold a public hearing on the proposed tax rate for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023 and ending September 30, 2024.
Thank you. Counsel, Mrs. Drake went over the slides last week. Would you like to hear her go over them again? Thank you, Mrs. Drake. We will have another public hearing. Public hearing is open. Is there anyone present who desires to speak on the matter which is to be heard or to present evidence regarding the matter? Melissa Brown.
I appreciate my questions being asked or answered from citizen comments. I have one question before this is passed and before the tax rate is passed because it will make a difference. What is going on with the HOT fund and the contracts in that fund based on what the tax code says? After that, I want to just say, don't charge us more than what we owe, don't charge us more when we pay less, when we owe less, I'm sorry. Since the debt service fund and water and sewer will be reduced by $12,637,305.54 on October 1, and a direct transfer from all of those bonds from the city of Colleen's responsibility to the city of Harker Heights responsibility, and the fund balance will increase by $1,039,777.46. The $1.50 increase to resident water bills should not be included in this budget. The approximate $2 million would be absorbed by this debt service reduction and by the increase in the fund balance for the next at least two to four years, even getting growth. A revised ordinance could be completed before October 1, making it completely feasible. Also, since the tax rate is above the unadjusted voter approval rate and is using part of the increment rate, any amount of reduction that we can have in the tax rate would be helpful to property owners and renters alike. If we can't reduce the tax rate, at least reducing those fees is a little bit of a lighter burden. I would also like to add that if this council approves this budget and tax rate as proposed, then unfunded requests for fire, police, and services to help domestic violence victims, homeless, and the less fortunate, many of which can be added into this budget for less than $1 million total, which we have in the general fund balance above the 22%. This would improve public safety and quality of life for everyone. In my opinion, that would include the crime scene units, the fire inspectors, a new fire marshal, and an assistant fire captain, and then the $30,000 that was requested to staff a warming sensor, also the $5,000 that was requested for emergency housing. Also, in CDBG, our HOT team had requested a total of $20,000, but they were only approved for $5,000. So in this budget, we can find the extra $15,000 to give them to make sure that all of our citizens housed or unhoused in a safe home or in a home where they're being beaten and need to escape can be taken care of. This council many times has said that that's important to them. Quality of life is of the utmost importance. I've heard that actually just this morning. So making sure that we have the appropriate staffing for the departments that take care of our citizens, prioritizing that above second assistant city managers, prioritizing that above having additional code enforcement officers that are going to be just for an area that already has a code enforcement officer that is only available for that area right now. Those shouldn't be up on the priority list. But fire, police, solid waste, water and sewer drainage, all of these are essential to quality of life and to health and safety. They should have higher priorities than some of the other stuff. We have the $1 million if you're going to keep this tax rate, if not lower it back down to the unadjusted voter approval rate. Thank you.
Your time has been up, but I'll just let you finish the sentence. There's no actions. Let me close the public hearing because there is no actions. No actions. Okay, sir, I'm sorry. Is there a problem? Did we get a form on him? I didn't have a form on you.
No, Madam Mayor. I don't believe he turned in a form, but since it is a public hearing, I believe he's able to speak at this time.
I apologize. I had to open up public hearing. But I did see you go over there, Mr. Persa. I thought you filled out one. So, Mr. Persa, please come. And that's on us. You have three minutes. I mean, four minutes. Sorry about that, sir.
Thank you. I did try to fill one out. I'm confused as well as Mr. Segaro about when I could talk again. I would like to say that when you look at our building permits that went from 1,000, 1,200 down to 5, 600, that's all you really need to know. There is a problem somewhere. Y'all can decide where it's at. I think I've got my position, but y'all can make your own position. But when you go from 500 or 1,100 down to 500, something has changed. And yes, the interest rates have gone up. I agree with that. That changed. Temple has increased their building permits. So that doesn't hold water for me. There's something else that's changed. So I would suggest that we look at what has changed and try to figure it out because this is not working. When you go, when you cut your building permits in half, that's a problem. And I like to use examples. And this is one that fits for me. It may not fit for y'all. But if Walmart or HEB stores here were doing $1 million a month, and all of a sudden they started doing a half million a month, somebody at corporate is going to talk to somebody about something. So that's a problem. And in business, when your, when your business gets cut in half, somebody ought to start looking at something. And y'all need to look at something. And y'all, seven of y'all can look at whatever you want to look at, but it is a problem. And our city is not doing what it is capable of doing. We can get back to 1,000. And y'all need to look at that. And it's up to the seven of y'all. And I'd appreciate it if y'all would look at it because Temple is still growing. And I have a very different view on Lubbock. I have a very different view on Fresno. I can tell y'all that our lots in Colleen, Texas are basically $40,000. You go right down to Round Rock or Georgetown, that same lot's 100, maybe 150,000. So it's very hard to compare cities. And I appreciate Ms. Cobb because she said it out loud. You can't compare us to these things. We're Colleen, Texas. We're Fort Hood, Texas. And affordability is important. And so y'all need to consider these kind of things. And you have, you need to keep our city competitive. If they're charging $3, then we need to figure out how $3 works. And I'd like to correct the narrative that we cost y'all money, that y'all are paying because I can hear some council members up here that still believe that. And the narrative is not that we cost y'all money. We make y'all money. The narrative is y'all have a cost in what we do. Y'all want to have inspectors out here, which is fine with me. Y'all want to have plan reviews, which is fine with me. That costs y'all money. But your net income is more than your cost. Just is. So the taxpayers are not paying anything. Y'all's revenue off of fee-oriented services, ad valorem taxes, and sales taxes far outseeds the cost that y'all participate in. We put the infrastructure in at our cost. I pay for all your water lines, all your sewer lines. Y'all get to collect revenue off of those in perpetuity. So there's issues here that need to be addressed. And I've done all I can by taking and getting the home builders together, getting council members together, and trying to get y'all to understand their, the other position. Thank you.
Sir, I just have a quick question for you. You said the $3 for Temple. What is that fee for?
It is a fee associated with your plat. It's per lot. They, they charge $3 per lot. I heard copper, silver, belt, and charges $5. Y'all want $25, which is eight times the money. And y'all, they both threw it twice. It's a preliminary plat and a final plat. So in Temple, I'd pay $3 preliminary, $3 final, $6. Over here, I pay $50. That puts my city at a disadvantage.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to know about that $3.
Okay. Any other questions?
Not for me. Did you have a question for him, Councilmember Alvarez?
No, ma'am. I was just going to make a statement.
Okay. Any questions of him before Mr. Persa sits down? Okay, thank you, sir. Councilmember Alvarez. Oh, let me close, close public hearing. Public hearing closed. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, I've said this on the dais here before, and I'm going to continue to say it. You know, there's, it's all about balance. You know, we talk about growth and development and costs and taxes and fees. And everything in this world has a cost associated with that. We know that. We're cognizant of that. The city continues to grow. Yes, we want it to grow. How we want it to grow, that, that's the, that's a topic that's up for discussion. We just heard staff say that the city of Temple and the city council and the elected officials there have chosen a different path. They've chosen to, to put the cost on the taxpayers on the back end. All right? And what we're trying to do here is find a balance to that. I understand what you're saying, building permits. Colleen, back in its heyday, was doing 1,000 permits a year, and now it's vice versa. But you only have so much land to develop. And at certain time, those numbers are going to go down. It's an ebb and a flow. We can't expect to continue doing 1,000 building permits a year when we only have so much land left in the city limits. You have to also think of other things here coming to the city. So I don't see an issue there when you talk about building permits. And the fees, the fees are what they are. There's a cost associated with doing business. You're going to pass it on down to the consumer just like Walmart and everybody else when their costs go up, as everybody's costs have been going up. Nobody can say that it costs them to live this next year what it caused them to live the previous year. Everything's gone up from gas to groceries to clothes to shoes to tires on your car. Everything's gone up. So we can't assume to, to live in the past when things cost a certain amount and continue doing business that way and think that we're being fiscally responsible and this is going to be sustainable forever. You know, things come, go, they change, and we just need to, to be there and do our best to find that right balance between who's going to pay for what and how do we continue to grow the city intelligently and as fiscally responsible as we can.
Councilmember Segaro.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, I'm still a little bit of confusion here because I've heard several different things. And, you know, I heard the staff say that Temple doesn't have any fees. And then here it was said that they do have fees for the plats. I think that's the preliminary plats of $3 per lot. And I think, as I said earlier, I think the big issue is the $25 residential preliminary plat. So it, does Temple, do they have fees or don't they have fees? Anybody can answer that? Because I'm not sure. Mr. Zager, if you can clarify, because they're, they're telling us there is fees over there. And then.
As Mr. Zager comes up, we've attempted to talk to all of these cities in the past week, and Mr. Zager's just told you about his conversation with Temple.
So our focus in engineering, we're looking at our development review, the plan review, and the inspections for engineering. And so those are the ones fees that Temple doesn't have. And they don't have fees for that. In regard to the plan review or plat review, preliminary plat, final plat, they do have other fees. It's just a matter of how they want to allocate it, but they are, like I say, low.
And so about $3, you don't know if that $3 is accurate number?
I haven't checked the planning.
Compared to ours, the 25.
Yeah, I was focusing mainly, 25 I know is ours for sure. I haven't really checked the, I haven't checked the planning, or I need the building permits or any of the permits. Because my, my focus really, I was focused on what I was responsible for.
Got it. And I appreciate that. And as I said before, I mean, I, I think, you know, personally, I think, you know, builders can afford this stuff. My thing is not with the builders, you know, they, they can pay this. My big thing is, is, is the market and understanding. You know, I was at a presentation on Friday morning with our county judge, and his slide, I could have taken a picture of it, and he says, he's given us numbers, and he says 20% of new tax revenue comes from the new building. And it's like, wow, I didn't realize it was that high. Every year, 20% comes from the new building. And that's a lot. That's revenue that comes into the city from new tax revenue that comes in. And so when we look at the competitive nature that we have among cities, we just need to be cognizant of what shifts. And, you know, I did some numbers because I'm in real estate. Everybody knows that. And we used to do about double, and this is the sales. I'm talking about the sales because I know it's, it's a statistic, and it, it's, sales usually go in line with the new home building. We used to do about double. And then the last six months, you know, we've sold about 1,000 homes in just the city of Colleen. Temple's at 855. So they're getting pretty close to passing us, if not exceeding us. The rest of the cities, we don't have to worry about. You know, they're over there, 200, 100, 379, copper, silver. And so, you know, I just don't want that leakage to go south. I'm not worried about Waco and all that because I know we're not going to lose any opportunities there. The biggest threat I see is the Temple market. They're very competitive. And when you said they don't paint on, I say, is that a marketing thing that they're trying to do to attract? Because I know that. Because I know that their land is, is a little, is more expensive than ours, you know? And so, when they sell a lot, it is higher. So, what are they doing to try to grab these people to move over there? And, you know, we don't want to lose, you know, 20% of new tax revenue every year, because I think that'll definitely have a much bigger impact than some of these fees. And I know that, I think that we just need to communicate this better, because, again, it's not about the fees, it's that making it easier for developers to come here, just like what we do with businesses, when we're trying to attract them, you know, what, we, we're, we're trying to incentivize them to come here. And then a lot of times when we have them, it's like, what do we do to try to make sure that they stay here? Because excluding what we heard tonight, I've talked to other developers, and some of them that have told me that I'm never gonna do anything in clean anymore. And it's like, we, we don't want to lose that 20% that the county judge says comes every year from new construction and new building, tax revenue that comes to the city. That's huge. And so, my thing is always that, not losing that and keeping the prices where they don't go up, because if they do go up, I know tax revenue will go up, and that'll probably make up for the 20%, but that's always been my biggest concern, so, thank you, I'm done, Mayor.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, and this is probably for Mr. Cagle. It's just been said, sir, a couple of times about being fiscally responsible, and also that Temple right now is experiencing exponential growth, and that we have limited land to develop. So, my question is that, are we putting ourselves, or would we potentially be putting ourselves at a disadvantage competitively speaking, if we are increasing our fees and then losing development in our area because of lack of land and lack of future potential growth? Are we putting ourselves at a competitive disadvantage?
I don't believe we are. I don't even know, I would say that there's limited land, it depends. There's, there's a lot in the north that's developable, that's starting to happen now, and then outside our city limits to the south, there's quite a lot too. All the laws have changed, you know, it, it used to be we would annex, people would build, you can't do any of that anymore. So, to, to make the, the simple assertion that there's one fee in one city and a different fee in another, and everything flows from those fees, I, I just don't buy that. That, that's a very, very small part of the equation. And I've heard the narratives since I've been here, that if anything good happens in Temple, it's bad for us. I don't, I don't necessarily understand that either. If, if they're getting a new house, that's a house that should've been built in Colleen. I, I think everybody can grow.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Madam Sec, Councilmember Alvarez? I'm sorry, sir. This is your second time speaking.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to comment on, Councilmember Segaro threw out a, a statistic from the Bell County judge, I, I received that same presentation, that 20% is not just residential new construction, it's also commercial, so, just wanted to clarify that. And, you know, comparing ourselves to Temple or any other city, as Councilmember Cobb stated earlier, is, is apples and oranges. Everybody has different circumstances, different factors that, that affect them economically. Temple has a lot of industry, they have I-35, they have a lot of the things that they can rely on that the city of Colleen, to date, doesn't have, at least not in that quantifiable amount. The other thing, you know, we talk about all these fees, and, and I'm not one to, to fall for scare tactics and say that these fees are gonna make it unaffordable for the first-time homebuyer. You know, if a $25 fee goes down, let's say a buyer's looking to buy a home and it's $200,000, and now all of a sudden this home is $205,000, if you can't, I'm saying this as bluntly as I can, if you can't afford a house at $205,000, you shouldn't be buying it at $200,000, because you're gonna be putting yourself in a financial hardship. $5,000 over a 30-year amateur, amateurized loan is dollars, maybe $3 a month if you figure, based on the prime interest rate. So, you know, when we talk about affordable housing, what we call affordable housing in Colleen is not truly affordable housing. The cheapest home that you can buy, new construction today is probably $260,000. For the majority of people, that's not an affordable home. So, I think we need to do a better job at, at finding builders and developers that are amenable to producing and building truly affordable housing, something with a 1 in front of the price versus a 2, whether that's a thousand-square-foot home or some other housing product to fit that need. Lennar's doing it in Georgetown and San Antonio, there's builders out there that are doing it. So, if we're gonna really talk about affordable housing, let's really call a spade a spade, so, thank you.
I'm really big on our comprehensive plan, and one of the things is diverse housing within our community, and we just have to work with our builders and developers and talk to them in reference to the comprehensive plan. I go, both of you have great points, Councilmember Solomon Segaro and Councilmember Alvarez, but we are going to be putting the rubber to the road right now as we go to our next item on the agenda, where it's time to vote on our budget. Madam Secretary.
OR 23016, consider an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the city of Colleen for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023, and ending September 30th, 2024. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance adopt, approving and adopting a budget for operating the municipal government of the city of Colleen for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2023, and ending on September 30th, 2024. Appropriating money for the various funds and purposes of such budget, including appropriations of money to pay interest and principal sinking fund requirements on all indebtedness, providing a savings and severability clause, providing all ordinances and appropriations in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance, and establishing an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Staff, Mrs. Drake went over our budget for the last couple of weeks, would you like for her to go over the budget again? No, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Drake. And council now, as I stated, the rubber hit the road, we're gonna have a record vote on the budget. And I need a, a motion in a second. Councilmember Solomon, I need a motion in a second to consider the ordinance, to vote on considering the ordinance, and that would be OR dash 23 dash 016.
A motion.
You move to approve it?
Yes.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Solomon, we have a second one, second to the motion by Mayor Protem. Madam Secretary, would you please call?
Yes, ma'am.
For a record of vote.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Solomon?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cobb?
Yes.
Councilmember Segaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyd?
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yeah.
Madam Secretary, I confirm the votes as 7 to 0. Please notate that in the record.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Whenever you're ready, Madam Secretary.
RS 23142, consider a memorandum resolution ratifying the property tax revenue increase reflected in the annual budget for the fiscal year October 1st, 2023 through September 30th,
Council Mrs. Drake have already gone over this, would you like for her to discuss this again? Mayor Protem?
Madam Mayor, I move that the property tax be increased by the adoption...
Madam, madam...
I'm on the property tax, and y'all still going, okay?
No, ma'am, I, state, you have to read what I gave you, verbatim, it has to be exact, cannot be changed.
Well, let me go back, y'all. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.62088, which is effectively a 13.4...
Wait, stop, stop, stop.
The 0.64 is 13.6.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We on 15, I'm sorry, I don't move on.
Yeah, you on 0.16.
Well, you're right, you can do motion, you can do the motion on RS 23 dash 142, you was, oh, Councilmember Solomon, then I come back to you.
Yes. I was ready.
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
To approve?
Yes.
Okay. We have a second.
Yes, I second.
Okay, all in favor of approving RS dash 23 dash 142, and that's to consider memorandum resolution ratifying the property tax revenue increase reflected in the annual budget for the fiscal year October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2024. I apologize for that, Mayor Protem, I had skipped that one.
That's okay. We're good.
Now, we're ready for the next one, as soon as we get the vote. Someone's not voting. Madam Secretary, now, this is the correct one, item 16, OR dash 23 dash 017.
OR 23017, consider an ordinance setting a tax rate of .06208 per $100 valuation comprised of 0.4742 for maintenance and operations, and 0.1466 for debt service for fiscal year 2024, tax year 2023. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance setting the tax rate and levying all tax upon all properties subject to taxation within the city limits of the city of Colleen, Texas, for the 2023 tax year, and for the use and support of the municipal government of the city of Colleen for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023, and ending September 30th, 2024. Apportioning said levy among the various funds and items for which revenue must be raised, including providing a sinking fund for the retirement of the bonded debt of the city, and establishing an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council Mrs. Drake presented this to us already, would you like for her to present it again? Thank you, Mrs. Drake. No, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So, can I get a motion, Mayor Protem?
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.6208, which is effectively a 13.43% increase in the tax rate.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Can I get a second? Councilmember Alvarez?
Madam Mayor, I second.
Thank you. Counsel, there must be at least 60% of you voting, according to our governor body, must vote in favor of this ordinance, and therefore, I will call for a record vote. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Solomon?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cobb?
Yes.
Councilmember Segaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyd?
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Madam Secretary, please let the record show that the council voted 7 to 0 to approve the ordinance.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 23143, consider a memorandum resolution to adopt a five-year capital improvement program for fiscal year 2024 through 2028.
Thank you. Council Mrs. Drake went through the slides last week? Anyone else, okay, no thank you, thank you, Mrs. Drake. Councilmember Boyd, can I get a motion to approve RS dash 23 dash 143?
A motion to approve?
Yes, sir. Oh, was that your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, second, Councilmember Segaro. Second to the motion.
I wanted to say something, but I'll second it.
Okay, I can come back and get somebody else if you don't agree to it, because...
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good, I'll second it.
Okay.
I just want a, the opportunity to the end to say something.
Yes, sir. Madam Secretary, the motion was made by Councilmember Boyd, seconded by Councilmember Segaro. Councilmember Segaro, you have the floor.
Can I, I'll, I'll, I'll do it after the vote.
But once we vote, we cannot discuss the item.
Okay.
So, you have to, this is discussion now.
No.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, I'm good.
Okay, so you don't have anything to say on this item?
Not on this item, at the end, if I can speak at the end.
You can speak...
This is our last item, right?
Yes, sir, you can speak now, but if it's not on the agenda, you cannot speak on it.
It's on the agenda.
But all the votes will be over, so that's why I'm saying it has to be done now, because once a vote is made, then I have to go to adjournment, it's over.
No, because what I want to say is, has to do with the budget itself, so can I speak on the budget, the whole budget?
Once we vote on something, we can't go back to it, according to the governor's standards and expectations.
That's what the governing standard is saying.
Yeah, we can't go back to it. If you didn't say it, then we cannot discuss it, and that's what the council approved on, so it cannot be discussed. I thought it was just this item.
No, no, it's the entire budget.
Okay, yes, sir. It cannot be discussed, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because...
No statements, a governor's standards and expectation.
No, and, and it has nothing to do directly, it's just, you know, every year at the end, we, I know we go through a lot, so...
Madam, attorney, can he speak on, even though we voted on, he just want to give a general comment, but we already voted on that item. This is something this council decided, once you vote on it, we cannot have any more discussion on it, and that's the governor's standards and expectations. So, with that being said, can I get a motion to approve RS dash 23 dash 143?
Madam Mayor, there's a motion on the floor in a second.
Oh, is it all in favor? Yes, could you say to who did the motion in a second?
Yes, ma'am. A motion was made by Councilmember Boyd and seconded by Councilmember Segaro.
All in favor, yes, all disapprove, no. Motion carries 7 to 0, can I get a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Alvarez made the motion, was seconded by Councilmember Solomon, all in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed, meet in the adjournment.